Okay. Good evening. This is the Sandpoint City Council Special Meeting for July 29, 2020. For the record, council members Espiro, Darling, McAllister, and Groth are present. Council members Williamson and Rule are absent. We will now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Since I'm participating remotely, I will not be speaking out loud because it'll throw everybody off, so I would ask Councilman Darling if you could lead us through the Pledge of Allegiance. It'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To this republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate that. The purpose of this evening's meeting is a workshop between city council and city staff regarding the fiscal 2021 city budget. As a reminder, the same as last week's workshop, public comment will not be taken during this workshop. This is a council presentation and discussion item only, and no decisions will be made here this evening. A public hearing which will provide for public comments on the proposed budget is scheduled for August 19th. Also, please note that this is a special meeting, therefore a public forum item is not included on this evening's agenda, but will be included on the agenda for the next regular council meeting scheduled for August 5th. The fiscal year 2021 proposed budget is fully digital and interactive. A link can be found by visiting the News and Announcement section of the city website at www.sandpointidaho.gov. City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton will now lead us through the workshop. Take it away, Jennifer. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sarah's going to be my Finance Director Treasurer is going to be my driver again tonight. And what we're going to be working through is a worksheet that is similar to what council members have seen in past years highlighting our capital projects and grants. And as we're going through the worksheet, Sarah will have this online, so the public can see this as well. And we'll also be referencing our capital improvement plan, and so that people know how to get to that, we can switch off over to our website. Again, as Mayor Ronstadt mentioned, our budget book is completely electronic this year, so the public can access all of the information, drill down in our budget book, and get more information than we've ever previously had. And how to access our budget book, it's right on our front page. It's one of our scrolling news and announcement stories. If you click on the Proposed Budget, it will take you to the link to the Budget Book. And if you go down to the Table of Contents in the Budget Book, under Inter杜ctory Section, there is Capital Projects. Did I call it the right thing? I'm not looking at my screen. I'm looking up there, and I can't. Capital Improvement, which provides a summary, financial summary, including amounts for all of the different projects. For anybody that's been to one of Sarah's presentations before, she likes cooking. I'm on the Budget Book, though. I was on the Capital page, but not the first one, the main page, Capital Improvement, main page. Let me go back and forth. That just stops sharing, and then we share. So on our Capital Improvement page, if you scroll down, it will take you to a listing of all of our Capital Improvement projects. You can see the costs associated with all of those projects, and you can actually get into the stories for all of those and learn more about what those projects are about. Up at the top, there is a link to the Capital Improvement Project Stories, and we'll just leave that up in the background tonight, too. So if council has any questions on any specific projects, then we can pull up those stories and reference them, too. So do you want to go down to where that shows the stories? Yeah. So, and you can see that we have these, our stories are all grouped by facilities, budgets, land, vehicles, machinery, and equipment, information technology, infrastructure, streets, and ride-aways. And we have all of our Division Heads here tonight, and Linda with Grants, to answer any questions council may have as we go through this. So we'll go back to the worksheet at this point. And so tonight, we'll be working through this worksheet, talking about capital projects included in the budget, answering any questions council members have. And once we're through capital projects, Sarah's going to do a presentation on debt. So we typically not have that as a part of our budget presentations. That's new this year with a section in the budget book dedicated to debt. So Sarah's going to be talking about what we've got on there, including what's outstanding, how many years, and that kind of information across all of the different funds. So, going back to the worksheet. So on our budget worksheet tonight, what you'll see on the budget worksheet, we color-coded these, so it's easy as we're going through, and it'll tie back to the various different funding sources. So any of our projects that we have that are shaded in green, those are projects that are identified in the budget as grant-funded projects, either grants that have been awarded, grants that have been applied for, or grant dollars that have been set aside so that we have budget authority to apply for grants for projects. Your blue shading is the Sandpoint Urban Renewal Agency funding. You see, again, a significant decrease in that in the budget for fiscal year 2021 because we don't have significant capital construction projects occurring. So SURA has typically funded our downtown revitalization projects. And then finally, you can see our, in the kind of pinkish-red highlight, those are projects that are funded with water and wastewater reserves. So moving on to the worksheet, under Category 1970, General Government Projects and Grants, we have budgeted again this year, which is something that we started a couple of years ago, a million dollars for miscellaneous grants. And so typically, again, we're going to council when we are applying for grants, when grant awards come in, those go before council, so you know what projects those are for the year. And that gives us the budget authority for the year as the grants come in, that we would have the ability to spend the grant dollars as we're receiving those. In past years, those were identified projects, they were kind of all over our different budget categories, and we rolled all of those up a couple of years ago into a single grant line budget. So it's clear what's the amount for grants we may potentially receive, and then we're basically working off of that amount through the year. If we received a large number of grants, we exceeded the million dollars, we could be in a position where we'd have to reopen the budget. A million dollars seems to be about a right number for us to work with for this fiscal year. We've been just about a million dollars in grants that have come in this fiscal year. We've included, as a grant-funded project, it's really utility incentives and rebate funding, energy efficiency projects. In 2018, we had the engineering team from Avista Utilities come out and do an energy audit on our city facilities, so that included City Hall, Community Hall, wastewater and water treatment plants, both of our shops, so the park shop, our city shop out near the airport, and make some recommendations for us on improvements that could be made to achieve greater M&amp;O savings and promote energy efficiency in our buildings. Many of those projects are lighting projects, kind of low-hanging fruit lighting projects that have been identified. We've had this budgeted over the last couple of years, and due to just the volume of other projects, particularly our large construction projects with downtown, we have not implemented any of these energy efficiency projects, but we intend moving into 2021 to start working on knocking down some of those lighting projects. So those are improvements primarily to LED technology in our lighting, both within our buildings, but also in our parking lots and some of our facilities. We are using HID lights typically in our parking lots at some of our parks facilities, which are some of the more inefficient light fixtures. And so conversion to LED, not only from a maintenance standpoint saves us work associated with it, having to bring out electricians to deal with ballast, but it also, just in energy costs, is significant savings. We have rolled over funding for our Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation Master Plan. That plan began, our consultants were out last week for four days, and we will have a State of the City report from our consultants related to Arts, Culture, and Preservation, probably at one of your September meetings, and this is carrying over the budget for that because the project will continue into fiscal year 2021. Our Public Transportation Contract, that is, the contract was bought, that came to council a couple of months ago, and that's the amount that was approved by council for the 21 fiscal year. And I would note with that that we use resort city taxes to fund a good portion of the spot contract. So that's our hotel motel taxes. We have budgeted $20,000 for public art projects, and again, you'll note that this item is highlighted in blue. These are SURA dollars. Again, we have a 1% set aside of SURA revenues for public art projects in the downtown district as well as the northern SURA district. One of the topics I expect to come before council related to that is potentially expanding that to arts, culture, and preservation projects, but that obviously will be a conversation that occurs as part of the master planning effort. There is $10,000 budgeted for Historic Commission, which is typically grant donation dollars that come in, that pays for training and projects, including the downtown historic walking project and the brochures associated with that. So that's a typical amount carried over from year to year. Improvements to the airport property, this is going to be a topic for us this year, I suspect also this fall. We have $192,300 budgeted here. We budget that every year. So this is our property that is located out by the airport, across from the city shop that was our former business incubator site. About, for about four years ago now, we moved from having that be an incubator building to renting that out to a single tenant. So that's biomedical innovations that is in there right now. Their lease is coming to an end at the end of this calendar year. The city can counsel, at the time that we did that, that lease for that property had indicated that there was an interest at the end of this lease term that we would be putting that property up for sale. So surplusing it and putting it up for sale, there was much discussion around how effective government agencies are as landlords. So that will be a topic for council to consider, probably at one of your meetings in September. This amount budgeted represents lease dollars that come in over the year, and we just, from year to year, we budget the amount of the lease dollars coming in because it's our building, so we are responsible for substantial improvements at the building. There are a couple things that are potentially coming up, roof replacement, we're looking at that with the building, there's doors that need to be replaced. It's an older building where there haven't been a lot of upgrades to it, so we're coming to a time where there's going to be some probably fairly significant capital investments that, again, lease dollars would pay for if we continue to retain that building.
But basically, an escrow, don't they?
Yes. Yeah. Any questions on that building? We haven't had a whole lot of discussion on that in the last year or so.
Was that Councilman McAllister that spoke? I didn't hear what you said.
I just asked if it was used as an escrow account.
Yep. Yep. They've had increasing rent over the term of their lease to get the rent up to closer to a market rate rent. That one was when we had done the rent on that building about four years ago, and that was a point of discussion with the city council at the time. At the start, it was a bit below market for a rental rate for that building, but then increasing year on year. Our policy right now relative to any of our lands, our facilities, anything now, is we look at what our market rate costs and we charge market rate rents, so. Strategic Projects, this is a budget category that council had approved last year, which is really a set aside if there is an opportunity, a strategic opportunity that comes up during the year, that we have set aside funds specifically for that. In this calendar, or in this fiscal year budget, we had set aside $100,000 for strategic projects, and the 21 budget, we did a set aside of $50,000. And again, this would be something where there would be a discussion with council relative to the allocation of these dollars prior to that happening, but it's an amount that's set aside. It's not just leftover funds from somewhere else, it's an earmarked amount so that we know that it's there and available for strategic projects. The Downtown Parking Lot Improvement Project is a carryover project. It has been included in the SURA budget. We've carried it over for several years now, as we are looking at the parking study, which is the item right below that, and determining what the needs are relative to parking downtown, including, do we need to consider a further build-out beyond just the surface level parking at the downtown parking lot? The commitment relative to the city parking study was that we would not undertake the parking study until Phase 1 and Phase 2 construction was complete, and we really had a final sense of how many parking spaces we had available in the downtown core. So we're at that point now, and we are beginning discussions on the development of the RFP for the parking study. Essentially, what we've done with the Downtown Parking Lot Improvement dollars is, rather than, originally, that was a set aside in SURA for surface improvements that arguably are very needed down at the downtown parking lot, landscape improvements, addressing some of our failing asphalt in the parking lot. We've done a few interim fixes with that, but again, the notion was rather than invest in a surface-level improvement where we really may need to look at some other type of structural improvement in the parking lot to hold on to these dollars that could be used as match or seat dollars for something along that line. Particularly this year, in fiscal year 2021, we have our downtown fiber project, which includes Phase 1, the improvements down at Farman's Landing, but Phase 2 is build-out and realignment of our fiber infrastructure through the downtown floor, including in the downtown parking lot, and that needs to be completed even if there was a determination that we're going to do the resurface of our parking lot and improvements there. The fiber project needs to be completed first. So we currently have one of our main fiber lines, both city-use line and economic development line, right next to it runs right through the middle of the city parking lot. If we were to do anything different with that parking lot, we need those relocated out of there, so that's included as part of the fiber project. We also have a large vault that is at the city parking lot, and the thought was that there was going to be kind of a network hut that would be located down there, which also would have impacted parking in an area of the lot. Since, since that time, our fiber improvement plans indicate that where we really should have that connectivity would be a build-out of the building, just a little bit of a build-out at the Jeff Jones Square building on the maintenance side of the building, rather than a separate hut in our parking lot. And again, the notion would be to realign the fiber out of the middle of our parking lot and get it back into underside, water, and streets, so there is the opportunity to build up in that lot. Baldi repeater enhancements, these are dollars that we received years ago. One thing people may not know, so we have the Baldi Tower, where a lot of our emergency communication equipment is located. Avista has their communication equipment located up there, so they can communicate across the region. We've got other partners that are up there as well, and these are dollars that are set aside for enhancements to that system up there. We're in the process of getting a survey done at that site. We've got a few of our users up there, so they leased that property from the city for their communications equipment. Avista wants to do a fairly significant expansion up there and for their equipment, their communication tower. And so we are in the process of kicking off a survey and really getting a sense of really more active management of that tower site, who all is there. We're hearing interest from other parties, school districts who need internet capabilities, so as there is an interest in broadband expansion, we see a lot of that up there and the desire to use our towers and facilities up there. We have a lot of old buildings that are up there. We're trying to get a sense of who's active, who's not up there, and so this will likely go to some improvements, including actually fencing off that area because it's open to the public and accessible right now. People can drive up there, you can hike up there. It's quite a rough drive, as we experienced a couple weeks ago, but you can get up there, and from a Homeland Security standpoint, we probably need to look at some security improvements at that site. Our comprehensive plan is still underway, with a plan for that to be completed moving into this fall. There's a link to the comprehensive plan story in the online budget book, and council will be seeing presentations probably coming up in the next couple of months on where that is. We have budgeted, we have an allocation from the State of CARES funding, and we've talked about this under some of our previous COVID updates. The city had an allocation from the state of $289,000 in CARES Act funding. We have budgeted that in current year and moving, would carry over into next year for some of our IT upgrades that allow us to function remotely more effectively, audiovisual improvements in this room for both in-person as well as remote users. We have a set aside in this of $40,000 to support economic development, another round of grant programs, so that will be coming back to council for a review on what that revised program looks like in the fall. And then we've also used this for supplies, again, PPE for our staff, N95 in particular for our first responders, as well as some of the mass distributions that we've done. That's been our allocation with CARES Act dollars. Economic Development, this is a rollover from fiscal year 20. Council had approved in this fiscal year budget a set aside of $50,000 to look at strategic planning and really for seat dollars to look at a broad strategic plan on the role of the Bonner County Economic Development Corporation and other groups, including chambers around the county. We were planning on kicking off that strategic planning effort and coming back with a proposal to council on that this spring, and then COVID hit, and so obviously that changed with EDC, and the focus became more around the outreach, the technical support to the businesses, and grants to businesses. So this is carryover dollars from this year's budget, and again, this particular project is one that prior to those dollars being spent, it requires a presentation to council and approval of allocation of those dollars. We have included $75,000 for an impact fee rate study, so the update, as we are coming out with our capital improvement plans this fall and into this winter, we need to revisit our impact fees, and so that requires somebody who's an expert in doing that come out and revisit our impact fee plan and do an update. Any questions on any of the projects or grants in 1970 for me, or? And again, stories on all of these are available in the budget books, so. Government Buildings and Projects, we have rollover budget. This again is carryover from 2020, is a customer service remodel here at City Hall. We thought we had this all outlined, and we were going to be kicking this off this spring, and COVID hit, which did not put remodel on the top of our list. And in addition to that, it also has us back to the drawing board a little bit in what this design looks like to accommodate social distancing and requirements that are now part of our office life here for, for buildings. So this is a carryover from 2020. Again, this is focused on our first and second floors here, and we intend with capital improvement plans, again, to be coming back with look and design over on our public safety side for next year's budget. We took council as a part of the, our orientation workshop at the beginning of the year. You'll recall, we did a tour of both this side of City Hall as well as the police side, and any of you who missed that, Cory would love to give you a tour of his maze over in police. So we're in significant need of some improvements on the police side once we get through the customer service side. The Fiber Backbone Project is, this is in our fiber fund, we have a $1 million project identified that is Phase 1, the fiber infrastructure going in down at Farman's Landing in conjunction with the underground utility project that Avista is doing in partnership with the city. Phase 2 will be throughout the downtown core. We haven't identified this one specifically as a grant-funded project, but we do have an application with the state right now for a couple hundred thousand for Phase 1 of this project, and we're also working on a grant application for Phase 2 of this project as well. So Linda's been working on that, and we've got that project under design currently. In our Recreation Fund, we've got $150,000 budgeted for recreation equipment. This is at the Memorial Field project, so this is Phase 2. This is our bases, this is our dugouts, this is fencing that's needed there specifically for the sports at, at War Memorial Field. So, and because they're recreational activities, we budgeted that in the Recreation Fund. Anything else on that I missed?
Nope.
We've included $45,000 for a master plan for watershed recreation. Some of this budget, we will be pulling from, we are in the process of doing a change order with Greenplate related to our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We have them doing a site-specific plan at the watershed, and we've notified them that we will not be having them continue with that effort, and we are looking at opportunities with this moving into the fall. And once we get through that environmental study that's currently going on at the watershed, then that leads us into the recreation component of the overall watershed master plan. Amanda, anything else on? I know we've done a couple for I know we've done a couple of presentations on this. So, and we've got environmental coming back and a presentation back to council in September?
We have two phases. Uh, the first, uh, time we'll be coming back to council will actually be in, yes, the first week of September is sensitively scheduled, um, possibly the second meeting in August where we're going to talk about the permitting process for any new uses within the watershed. The actual management plan, um, is scheduled for completion in October.
We have a grant budgeted and we typically have this from year to year for noise abatement at the shooting range. Um, we are able to get grant funds for this and it's every so often we need to do further noise abatement.
Even if you've been up to the range or when you look at the ceiling, there's some eggshell looking stuff up there. And if you touch it now, it's sytrids. So please don't touch it or we need to replace it. So it is quite expensive. It's, uh, really surprising.
Do we charge a fee for the shooting range?
We do. It's, uh, you can season pass for like 20 bucks or five bucks a shot. Well, you.
All right. Yeah. I just wondered. I never knew.
When we first opened the range, it didn't have any noise abatement. It was quite loud. We closed it and bought some stuff.
Uh, we have again, um, $10,000 budgeted for watershed trail maintenance. This is for the trails that, um, are currently existing in the, the watershed. And we typically allocate these funds through a contract with Fondray Peddlers. And, um, they match our dollars usually three to one with grant dollars for trail maintenance and improvements. And we do expect them to be coming in once we come up with the process, um, for permitting with some realignment of some trails that we're continuing to see, uh, drainage impacts on and some safety issues with trails. And so these are dollars that they use for that. Uh, the number of users that we're seeing particularly this year, uh, up in the watershed and on our trails is off the charts. I know they've got game cams installed up there and on weekend days, we're seeing, um, counts of hundreds of trail users in a single day. So, um, the bike trail use up in the watershed is pretty amazing, actually.
Jason with the Peddlers, is he keeping an eye on that? So we know how many users there are?
Yep, they are. And I might add that the 10,000 this year really, I'm really excited about. We're working with them for even trail building school from the international standards. And so our goal is to bring the international standard, educate a bunch of our local cyclists. So as we go and improve our trails in the watershed, we're extremely sensitive and well-educated on how proper trail building techniques. So instead of just, you know, uh, giving them fish, we're going to teach them how to fish and take care of our stuff. It's going to be great.
The latest, um, so they do share the numbers with us, um, on trail users. The latest report we've gotten was, um, back late May, early June. And at that time, they were averaging 60 riders per day. Um, at the date that they'd given us the report, they had over a thousand riders in the last 17 days. So.
Thank you, COVID.
We're seeing pretty heavy trail use up in the watershed, but also becomes the reason for us to really look at master planning up there because, um, as it is, we really haven't fully, um, thought through and considered safety mitigation and really proactive management of our trails and our area up there. So, um, there's some improved signage that Fondray Peddlers just put up there, uh, that we had approved in the last month. Uh, so Fondray Peddlers really has, um, added a lot to the trails and really becomes our eyes and ears, um, in terms of management up there. But looking at really what the city role should be and what our emergency response should be up there will be components of the overall watershed master plan.
And that'll tell us whether this $10,000 is enough or too short. So at that time, we can figure out if they need more or how it's being used?
Yes. Yep.
Well, and that was the presentation we had earlier, right? With the guys that were here from like Mike Walcott. That was really interesting about, especially the safety aspect of it. How do we get here? This is all the further we can go. And yeah.
Thank you for that feedback, Yari.
Oh yeah. It was great. But I'm married to a forester, so.
Um, back on to Memorial Field, um, for that phase two project for Memorial Field, we did budget some of our parks impact fees. So again, phase two, right now where we're standing is that is currently under design. Uh, council will be seeing that within the next month, um, what the final design is, dollar amount, and, um, looking at approving, going out to bid with that project for phase two. Phase two is improvements to the parking lot, expansion of the parking lot, including, um, better alignment and improvements to the, uh, vehicle trailer parking for boats. It is improvements of the boat launch itself, um, landscape improvements, lighting improvements, stormwater improvements, um, and the addition of a restroom down in that area, um, as well as a kayak launch, a ramp going down to it that's ADA accessible. So, um, we're waiting for final design and dollar amounts to know, um, really how many other amenities can be added into that project. We've also, and this has come to council and part of presentations, we've been really successful in getting grant funding for that project too. So, um, in fact, uh, Linda and Kim today were meeting with, uh, state representatives about a boat wash station. Uh, so we've been granted a boat wash chase and that will be added there. That's in one of our launches where we, people tend to collect a lot of weeds. Um, and so, uh, they will be providing the boat launch station to the city via a grant, um, when that project is complete.
So have we ever talked about like charging out of staters for launching their boats?
No, but we will.
Okay. I even had out of staters say, you know, you should really charge us for launching our boats. I was like, oh.
It's a bigger conversation because there's fees and, but because we have some grant monies in, you can differentiate a whole bunch from out of state, but you can have fees for launching, like, you know, in Tewksbury County in Bayview and it's five bucks to launch a boat.
Right. Yeah.
So there, but there, definitely there's fee basis.
They are, so in the design, they are anticipating putting in electrical. So at some point in the future, if there was a decision to put a fee station there, um, that could be added. We've had conversations relative to, um, parking enforcement and manage of that, management of that, um, with police. And again, we have included in the budget, the addition of, uh, another, um, reallocated, uh, pro position. So community resource officer, they handle our parking and things like that. So if we go down that path and council decides that we're going to add parking fees, um, for, or launch fees down there, then that's something that we're prepared and staff wise, the crows would be able to manage.
Thank you.
Memorial Field, onto the next page. We have included in this budget, um, as an overall, uh, general line item for further discussion this fall, $200,000 for a parks property purchase. Um, this could be either a down payment on a property or this could be the total purchase of a parks property. Uh, we will be getting the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We have the final version. We're just in the process of doing the final review on and we will get posted in the next couple of weeks. And Green Play will be coming back to make a presentation to council on the Parks and Rec Master Plan at your August 19th meeting. What is included in that Parks Master Plan is a recommendation based on our population estimates. If, uh, we want to keep the amount of park space, green space that we have current, currently per thousand residences, residents, we need to add an additional, acquire an additional 25 acres of parks property or open space to keep that same ratio that we have now. Again, this is a council decision whether you want to keep the same ratio we have now. That's important, but if we do, then by, based on our, uh, population estimates by 2024, we need to consider the acquisition of an additional 25 acres. You'll recall in prior presentations that Green Play made, that they identified a couple of areas in town where we're lacking park space relative to walking distance for residences and, uh, equivalent with, uh, rest park space that we have in other areas of town. Those specific locations were, um, over here to the west near Ontario and then more predominantly up in the north, which is also where we're seeing a lot of our developments occur, uh, currently. Um, we've included a note in the budget book and I'll hand it over to the, um, mayor here in a second. Uh, the mayor's recommended that, um, council use that, those dollars as a down payment to purchase the Baldi property specifically. We already own that property. It is used primarily as recreation property currently, but that property was purchased by our sewer ratepayers as a location for a regional wastewater treatment facility. When the decision was made that the treatment facility would stay at its existing location, we've had discussions that as we move down this road and confirm that that's where we're staying, that a decision will have to be made relative to disposition of this property because it's owned by sewer ratepayers, the sewer business, not the general fund. Um, and we are coming to the time that that decision really needs to get made this calendar year, what direction we're going, uh, with that property and heading down the path of disposition one way or the other.
Is that the disc golf location?
Yep. Mayor, do you want to speak on this side of?
Yeah, I, I would add a couple of things. First of all, um, you know, currently as, as the counselor mentioned, it is the, uh, the side of the Baldi Foot Disc Golf Course. Um, they've made very efficient use of that land. Um, there, I think they've got 36 holes out there. Um, but there's, there is about, uh, maybe 16 to 18 acres of developable land out there. So there's really a number of other, um, range of opportunities that that land could be used for, um, as well as, uh, trail connectivity, which in the Barnard County Trails Plan, um, there, there was envisioned, uh, trail connectivity connecting Baldi to, all the way to Pine Street, um, west of the train tracks there through, through that corridor, um, that, that includes the Baldi property there. So, um, it's a, it's, it would be great for, uh, an opportunity to, to improve our trail connectivity along the western side of town, um, as well as, uh, for dogs. Um, and that's another thing that has become apparent through our recent, um, survey, uh, that went out on, on Open Gov. Um, and that is that there's, there's a demonstrated need, uh, throughout the community for, uh, more dog friendly parks. Um, this would be, it, it already is a space where, where dogs are welcome and, and there's a lot of space out there. It would, it would be a good, um, uh, space to be able to allow, uh, dogs without having a greater impact on our existing parks infrastructure. The other thing I would add is that, uh, this report that's coming out with Green Play is they're recommending that we acquire 25 acres by 2024. Uh, this parks plan that, that is, that we will, uh, take a, take a good look at here next month, um, it's a 20-year and beyond parks plan. So, um, as I'm sure many of you are aware, you know, the population here is growing. Uh, the opportunity for Sandpoint City to purchase land going into the future is going to be more and more difficult. It's going to be more and more expensive. Uh, so I think this is an opportunity for us to, uh, it's 37 acres, this, this Baldi property. It would be an opportunity for us to get ahead of the curve here and actually, um, you know, protect that, that ratio of open space to, to population, uh, well into the future, not just the 2024, but, but looking out, uh, 20 years and, and beyond. Um, and again, that, um, you know, I think what's, what's great about this property is, uh, not only is it a good space for, um, obviously disc, disc golf and, and for dogs and, um, for improving trail connectivity along the western corridor, but there's other opportunities that, that could be, um, considered out there as well. Um, so I would, I, I think the city would do well to secure that investment now and, and have the flexibility and, and option to explore other, other possibilities down the road. Um, the, the last thing I would say is that, you know, this is a, a special opportunity that we have through inter-fund loan to, at, at one, at one time make the ratepayers whole by purchasing this property from, uh, from the wastewater utility, but council can, uh, make the, the conditions of the loan. And so this is a, a much more, um, affordable purchase than if we were to just go out into the open market and buy 37 acres. Uh, we would be paying, uh, bank rates and, um, and we would have to, you know, meet the, the terms of standard terms of sale of, of, of the bank. And in this case, we can, the council has the authority to choose the down payment. If, if that's the route that the council wants to go, choose the down payment, choose the term, a typical, uh, Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, but a typical, typical inter-fund loan rate is around 1.2%. Um, and so it'd be a much more affordable purchase, uh, for the general fund to, no, do you want to correct me on that, Sarah?
It just depends on the market. It depends on the year. So it's all, it's looked at every year.
Okay. But it's a, it's a much more affordable rate than if we were to go out to the open market is, is the point. And, um, so it'd be a, a really affordable way for the general fund to acquire a large parcel of land that already has a, a large investment by, um, by interest groups. Uh, the Disc Golf Association has already put a lot of, uh, sweat and, and sweat equity and money into that property to develop that course. So, uh, if we were to dispose of that, we would be giving up, uh, giving up that, that investment and, and losing a great asset, um, that, that the, the public has, has built for the city. Uh, so I think it's a, a great opportunity for us to consider and that's why I'm recommending it, uh, in the budget for 21.
I would note to council again, in that, in that story, that they amount for the, the parks property purchase, that's what we have available in our parks, um, acquisition impact fees. Um, the value of the, that, that certainly is, um, far less than the value of the Baldi property. Um, we did have an appraisal on the Baldi property about a little over a year ago, um, so that we have a sense, again, with disposition on, on the value of that property. It was, um, appraised at 900,000 last year. So it's probably somewhere 900 to $2 million this year. So again, disposition in keeping, uh, the sewer ratepayers whole because that's a separate business fund. They have to be kept whole for their property. It's, we don't have the flexibility in terms of a sales price with that like you could potentially have with something in, in another fund. You can't do that with the, the enterprise ones.
It's not the right time to talk about it. We'll have more time to talk about later. That's fine. But since that property is technically in our possession, would it be possibly more prudent to look at other property to acquire now that we may not later, since this isn't going anywhere at the moment and acquire that and then possibly in the future as well, acquire this. So we can potentially have more opportunity. Is that something we can talk about later? I don't want to take up the whole.
Yeah, there, there could be the opportunity for council to consider that again with a, a property, uh, property discussion, um, on balancing the funds into the wastewater treatment fund and what's needed for funds for, um, the new wastewater treatment facility and the upgrades, the upgrades associated with that, which is right around the corner. Um, but again, as you could do an inter-fund loan and do payments over time. So, um, that is an option and we could look at, uh, other properties as well. So we'll be making a presentation.
Yeah. But just a thought came of, we can get more, we're doing other stuff now and then wait for this later, but.
Yeah, we just need to have a plan, really a disposition plan for that and be underway with that relative to the wastewater treatment plant because again, a decision had been made that the plant isn't going there. So, but yes, there.
So is that legally we have to do that or?
Okay. Yes. Yep. If it's general fund, we can have property and do whatever we want to do across different government services. But once we cross into sewer funds or, um, water funds, it's, those are our business. And so the ratepayers, we, we run that business for the ratepayers. So we have to be, um, extra diligent in keeping. So we have to be extra diligent in keeping those ratepayers whole. So that becomes the conversation with that property. But it will be an interesting discussion this fall. But again, we've included this as, as a placeholder for a property purchase in the event that council decided next year, that next fiscal year, you don't want to purchase the Baldi property. And you aren't, don't want to purchase any other properties next year, then the budget is available and we could just roll it into the next year. But if a property purchase opportunity comes along, then we have funds budgeted for that. And again, subject to council approval. A new item that we've also included in the budget this year specifically based on discussions anticipating the parks and rec master plan, as well as our multimodal plan coming out is a set aside specific for trails capital improvements. So acquisition of trails, other capital improvements to extend, extend trails. Primarily with the notion that this becomes most likely match dollars or, or grants dollars we can leverage for a trail. But if we had a short stretch of a trail, this certainly starts to get us there. But we had specifically in the budget this year, made an effort to identify an allocation for trails that is separate. And we'll get down to this under street and sidewalk projects from an allocation for sidewalks. Because we've got two different multimodal things happening. So we're not putting money and having that mixed where somebody has an expectation we're doing sidewalk projects. And we end up using it for a trail project. So we've specifically broken these out and had some internal conversations on what could be an appropriate allocation. That's something we felt we could admit to carrying forward in future years. So that was included in this year's budget.
Think Lakeview Park, some of those trails are real shot and we've got some aging trails.
Mechanic Trail, that's another one of our trails, a section of Mechanic Trail is the city trails. So, and again, there will be a discussion on, on trails with the idea that the trails are probably more of our recreation connectivity as opposed to our, our multimodal pathways related to streets, sidewalks, that type of a thing. You see budgeted next Memorial Reserves. So want to talk a little bit about what that is. We have a ordinance that was passed by council where a portion of the revenues that come in from the use of our parks. There is a set aside to support improvements needed at Memorial Field. So this was established in advance of the construction at Moore Memorial Field and the 1% local option tax. In, there is a set aside that is specific for just general memorial field. But in addition to that, we've talked about this in previous years. Since we have been talking about replacement turf and we had initial numbers from our first consultants with the anticipation that we were going to be doing a, a turf replacement project. We have been setting aside budget for the down, the road replacement for the turf field at that ten, fifteen year point. So for the last two years and the set aside will occur in this fiscal year at the end of the year. We're typically doing it as our audits getting completed. We have been doing a set aside of about twenty seven dollars, twenty seven thousand dollars per year for the field. And it's been approximately sixteen thousand dollars set aside for general improvements down at Memorial Field. So that we don't get back into the situation that we were with that facility where we had so much deferred maintenance that then we were looking at a full replacement needed of the facility. That was really the issue, not only with our grandstands, but it certainly was the issue with the field in particular. So, and that's come up in public discussion. If we, these one time dollars go into replacing the field, what happens down the road when the field, the carpet needs to be replaced again or other improvements need to be made. So there's been approximately just under fifty thousand dollars set aside for that per year. And we'll take a look at that once we get through. We haven't gotten the final numbers for the consultant, but that will go into next year's budget. Really what the anticipated costs are for the field surface that we put down. And so if we need to make an adjustment on the field replacement, well, you'll see that in the budget for fiscal year 2022. Finally, we have a set aside of ten thousand for donated projects. We frequently get people who want to make small donations to the park system. So this gives us budget authority for those donations coming in. Finally, our amount set aside for phase two at Moore Memorial Field is our local option tax. And we've got five hundred thousand dollars budgeted again, not taxed, sunsets at the end of this calendar year. So December 31st, 2020 is the end of the 1% local option tax as approved by voters. Any questions on parks recreation items at this point? She, you've got something else? You knew we were moving on to police.
We're on the police.
We're on police. In our police capital projects, we've got, again, highlighted in green, sixty five hundred dollars budgeted for bulletproof vests. We typically get annual grants for replacing our bulletproof vests. It's a federal nationwide program. And so this is the allocation as our vests reach the end of their service life. This is what we use to replace those. We have ninety thousand dollars set aside for police vehicles. And Chief, do you want to say anything about?
Just, just to add to that, so just for you guys to know, like a vest, you bulletproof vest is about fifteen hundred dollars to outfit a guy, an officer. They get to replace every five years. And so that is a match grant, so it's huge for us to be able to get that money. Everything that seems like we do is expensive. Cars, ninety thousand might seem like a lot. We have twenty two cars in our fleet. Right now, we have ten of those, I got a breakdown for you. So five of those cars have over a hundred thousand miles on them, two of them have over ninety five thousand, three have over eighty. So you look at about ten of our cars, out of our twenty two fleet, house over seventy five thousand miles. So we started a program a few years ago buying three cars. We have three cars currently coming in theory, they're supposed to be here this month. So I've been told, so it's in that replacement, one of these Jennifer I've talked about is getting into a program so we can get our fleet management going. And maybe a part of that rotation. So we used to have lines, so that's kind of the, the quick of those two.
We did budget and we talked about at our, our workshop last week. We've been kind of slowly working through our audits and reviews of our different operational areas. This year it was IT, next year it's fleet management, and I know council's been asking. That will really start to lay out the capital improvement plan and overall real clear identified management plan for our fleet across the city. So council will be seeing that next year, part of our operations. Enforcement grants, these are DUI emphasis patrols, speeding patrols. And again, these are federal dollars that come through the state. Police.
Texting and driving control.
That one hasn't, we haven't done that one yet. Usually you get the crosswalk, the seatbelts, the DUI aggressive driver, usually the ones that the state really pushes. Since that's a new, as of this year, it's new. So I don't.
I can help you out.
I haven't seen that one come through yet, but I'm sure it will when it comes to I T D venture, that's one they'll start to push as part of those hazards.
For a certain amount of like a year, it seems a long time.
The first six months are supposed to be warnings for the state and then they're going to allow citations to start coming.
If citizens like fake dummies, so if they were texting driving, they can just throw it right in front of the car and probably scare them a little bit.
You say you're going to do that? That's awesome.
Police communication improvements, these are improvements that were identified as part of our IT audit. And we pretty much have constant communication improvements and police budgeted from year to year. Just to ensure that our phone communications, our MDC communications, our cameras, our, everything's working.
Yeah, just the, our portable radios are going to work from three hundred to five hundred dollars. Our mobiles are in that same five hundred, our laptops that we carry off our cars communicate there, two to four thousand dollars. So as you guys know, technology changes daily and so those things are pricey at fixed, but it's, it's important for staff. So what's the, and what's some of the IT stuff that you've identified changes this year?
Our fire projects and grants, the ladder truck, if only they cost thirty eight thousand dollars. These are, we're coming to the end of our payments on the ladder truck. That's what you see budgeted. Street and sidewalk projects. You can see we've got specifically identified again, because we do project tracking, our staff salary and benefit time related to management, construction and design of street and sidewalk projects. You may wonder why thirty seven thousand budgeted for the Schweitzer Cut Off Roundabout that was completed a couple of years ago. This is because some of these projects that we get, road projects, the way the states design the funding. The funding flows through LTAC. And LTAC actually, we apply for a grant for a project to LTAC. If we're awarded a grant and it's an LTAC grant, LTAC actually becomes in most cases, the administrator of our project. So what we end up, they have the grant dollars and the match that's required for the project. We end up having to cut them a check at the time that we're awarded the grant for the match upfront. Change orders related to the project, LTAC issues those. And then at the end of the project, there's usually a true up that occurs. So we've had this amount budgeted for Schweitzer Cut Off because it has commonly been the case where we have a construction project, a streets project that LTAC has managed or a bridge project that they've managed. Change orders have been issued and we get two years or three years down the road after the project has been completed. And we get a bill out of the blue for additional dollars that are needed for the project because of change orders that were issued. So this amount is carried over because we may get a bill for Schweitzer Cut Off. And it's not awesome when we get the bill and we haven't anticipated getting it. So now we're scrambling, trying to figure out where we're going to pull the money from. So.
So is this an estimate of what you think it?
Yeah, this is what the state gave us as an estimate.
Okay.
Two years ago. Yeah, what they thought it would close out to be. Yeah.
Right. If I may add, I just want to clarify, we have a different management approach now, so we won't have surprises even if it is an LTAC grant. So I don't anticipate this going forward as our MO. But it's been frequently in the past, yes, it's been one of the situations here and we've tried to effectively budget for it. So again, it's not a surprise. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars we have included for underground utilities again at Sand Creek. That project's under design currently with Avista and hopefully we're under construction with that actually this fall. Farman's Landing, we've done a budget of four hundred thousand dollars for kind of the initial phase related to Farman's Landing, which would be the preliminary engineering and design, including initial stormwater. And the Farman's Landing design has been presented to council and will come back again as part of the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Anticipates pushing the shoreline out and a wall going up to prevent further erosion due to stormwater runoff there at the, at the public dock on Sand Creek. Anything else you want to say on Farman's at this point? We have for Great Northern, seventy five thousand dollars budgeted. You see this in blue, this is Sura dollars again, our, our blue dollars for improvements on Great Northern. So our, our urban renewal Northern District was created for reconstruction of Great Northern. So it was for stormwater improvements, realignment of the road, road improvements, as well as sidewalks on Great Northern. So that's what that Northern District was created specifically. That was the project similar to the Downtown District, Sura District was created specifically for the downtown revitalization projects. Amanda, do you want to say anything more on Great Northern?
Just that the seventy five thousand will not be for any improvements. It's just for the preliminary engineering. So really it's helping us, our last cost estimates were from 2005 when the Northern District was created. So sixteen years later, we kind of need to take a better deep dive into the concept of what those improvements would look like, what the costs would be. And a phasing plan. So that would be, the only thing I would add is that's what the seventy five thousand is paying for. We recently awarded a contract to JV engineers to assist us with that process. We had our kickoff meeting actually last week on the project. Their deliverable is due in January.
So I had a citizen, a neighbor that lives up there that asked about silent railroad crossings and its implementation. Would that be part of what this engineering would be looking at? Or not yet?
Not necessarily yet. I will say that the multimodal transportation plan is taking a look at silent crossings. How do we prioritize those, the costs, et cetera? So if those crossings are identified in that plan as, you know, worth moving forward to Great Northern, then that may be incorporated in the coming years.
And I know this is county, but how, does anybody know how the one, the silent crossing on Thunder Point, how that's turned out?
We have thirty four thousand budgeted for our, our RFBs. I know they're RRBs, but I don't remember what the RR stands for. I know it is rapid something.
Replacement flashing.
All right. We love our RRBs.
Do we?
And I don't, from a maintenance standpoint, we don't necessarily love our RRBs, which is why they are budgeted in there at thirty four thousand is we frequently have malfunctions with the, with our RRBs and parts need to be replaced.
Are these are leaking stop signs?
Not stop signs.
For the crosswalks?
Crosswalks.
The pedestrian ones that flash when you hit the button.
Yeah. And the ones that sometimes just will never stop flashing or, and there it's a very popular topic on Engage Standpoint when that happens.
For whatever it's worth this year, you're getting a little muddy in my brain, but I guess this year we completed actually replacement of sixteen of the existing RRBs. So this helps catch us up to the ones that we haven't replaced. So they have a useful life and we're just phasing as we're replacing them and it'll also provide for additional parts. So.
Multimodal transportation plan, that's carryover into next year. And maybe if you want to give council an update, brief update on kind of where that is and when something will be coming back to council.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jennifer. We had originally anticipated being a little bit farther along with our multimodal plan and then we currently are. The reason for that, despite that for the most part, I would say our master plans have not substantially been impacted by the pandemic. This is one exception. It has. In collecting data, obviously the traffic volume substantially decreased. We had anticipated really taking a deeper dive into looking at some of our functionality of interceptions and that needed to be postponed. It also proved to be a little bit challenging to have our community events with people during a pandemic. We had several sessions in person, when we were able to have in-person sessions. They were frankly, did not have the attendance we were quite looking for and hoped for. the attendance we were quite looking for and hoped for. And then when we do have our committee meetings via Zoom, it's again, just been challenging to get people to participate. So we're respecting that and anticipate that we'll have a draft plan for council's consideration around November. Really, so far I've been really pleased. I think we have a good handle on all of the issues in town. The list is quite long, as you can imagine. And so now they're really looking at what are our possible solutions? And then the next phase is taking a deeper dive into how are we going to prioritize those issues that we have? And there's a lot of factors that go into that prioritization strategy. So that's what we're currently working on. And we are picking up speed with some of that analysis again, because the traffic volumes are, they're not a hundred percent back to normal, but they are, as all of you have experienced, getting a heck of a lot closer to our, our norm. There's any questions left?
Well, maybe we could ask them to bring their dogs, because we seem to get a lot of surveys where people attend things, whether it's about dogs, I'm just saying.
We had great, not important things, but dogs.
Yes, I think it's a good point. And we did have wonderful participation pre-pandemic with our transportation survey. We got a ton of input on that. It's just, okay, now we have the data, we want to have input on what we heard. And we will roll out, we have kind of a plan moving forward with that, but we just had a bit of a pick up in the middle on this one. So.
Sidewalk project, so council approved changes to our city code relative to sidewalks. And so there is not a specific project identified with this, because again, that will come out from the multimodal plan. But what you're seeing included in this budget is it's about a fifty-fifty split. It's anticipating probably somewhere between fifty and sixty thousand in, in loop fees for sidewalks. And then the difference of that up to a hundred and thirty thousand was an amount that we budgeted from the general fund in this budget for sidewalks. So there we have much discussion again relative to the sidewalk ordinance about would the city put dollars towards sidewalks too? So this is kind of a first attempt to, again, to start to begin to establish an amount that's carried forward where there's consistent funding for sidewalk and again, to separate that from trails. Another infamous project that's been carried forward for a few years and we've been talking about, because this is the year that it's going to get done with our project manager, is a retrofit to our LED streetlights. So you'll, as you look at our streetlights downtown, our pedestrian lights, the new lights are kind of a wider, wider light and you see them stay on, they're not cycling on and off, which you can frequently see with some of our older lights. Our older lights are low pressure sodium lights, which when they're cycling on and off, we have to bring out and contract with an electrician to replace the ballast. They're more expensive from an energy standpoint to operate. So this project is a conversion of all of those lights to the LED lights.
No grand opportunities for that?
There is an opportunity for rebates through Vista. So we didn't highlight this one in green, but yes, and we've talked to them about that. So we anticipate some offsets for this project.
For sure.
Pine Street sidewalks, I think we've talked about the Pine Street project is primarily a grant funded project. The reason that you are not seeing that eighty thousand highlighted in your green for the grants is that is the city portion of that project. So that's the match and overage costs for, for that project or Pine Street, that the majority of it is grant funded project. So, and again, next year we're, we're into construction, design.
It's not next fiscal year. It's, it's the end of that season. So we are kicking off design this fiscal year that we're discussing right now. Followed by construction.
Pavement maintenance projects, you had a presentation on this at the last regular council meeting. Dan did the presentation. This was on the pavement report. And so we've done a set aside of five hundred thousand. Typically, as noted in Dan's report to council, we had been doing about two hundred and fifty thousand per year for asphalt overlays. So again, we've been looking as we've been going through the general fund and we've had some efficiency savings to how we can do a greater allocation to that backlog that we have with pavement maintenance.
That was still half of what was recommended, right?
Yeah, yeah. As we move through capital improvement plans, our plan going into next year's budget cycle, number one, will be presenting to council really a full capital improvement plan, not just a one-year plan like we basically are doing again this year. And that was the intent with the completion of our capital improvement projects. But in addition to that, going into next year's budget cycle, the plan is to start to really lay out again, our population growth numbers, start taking a look at SURA and when that sun sets and what that does to tax numbers and start to lay out again what we have in capital improvements and lay out a plan for with dollars that we know are coming in, how we might be able to fund some of these things and start planning for future year set asides. Memorial Stormwater Project, this is the portion of Memorial Field Phase Two that specifically will be stormwater treatment. So our, we have a significant stormwater outfall there at Memorial Field. You'll hear more about that with this project and this is providing the stormwater treatment there that was identified as a need on a previous stormwater management plan. We are typically budgeting amounts for water treatment, plant equipment, replacement upgrades needs. Those are ongoing issues. And in our water projects, we've got funding for the overall watershed ma- management plan, the timber management in the watershed, as well as projects that are identified in our water master plan that will be coming to council here in the next couple of months as well. We've also indicate in, included an amount to do an assessment on water and strategic planning and master planning in our area city impact, particularly over on the west side of town. Anything else on water, Amanda? We've got text on all of our water projects in the stories. Wastewater, I'll hand it to you on wastewater.
Thank you. So inflow and infiltration project, I'm sure this is familiar to you. We had a presentation a few meetings ago regarding the demonstration project, the pilot program that we talked about replacing the private laterals in town. We are moving forward with getting the mid packages out for that project. The budget amount that you see there, the 1.9 million includes that project as well as carryover on our final CIPP project, which is where we go in and we line the main sewer pipes. So it's on the public side. And it also includes the data collection associated with our INI efforts. As far as the wastewater treatment facility, the bridge improvements, that includes a van screen replacement. Actually, it's not really a replacement, it's a backup system for our van screen. It's an important component of our existing facility. And really, although we're replacing the facility in the coming years, we have identified in our facility plan, those really high risks of failure, we need to replace sooner than later to bridge the gap until we have a new plan. In other words, if, if this system were to fail, the consequences would be too great. So we need to address and mitigate that risk by getting this additional van screen. It also provides for us to start the development of the contracts associated with our upcoming wastewater plant replacement project. And other miscellaneous smaller equipment that we may need at the plant as it breaks, that's intended to be able to fix it. The wastewater collection capital improvement projects, we have allocated an amount to be dedicated from our master planning efforts, our capital improvement plan, I'm sorry, it's not a master plan, capital improvement plan for collections, which is associated with the public side again. So we'll have, we do not have our final capital improvement plan on that. We anticipate it next month. And we will be coming to council for a more detailed review of that. It's very similar to our water set aside that we have for those master plan projects that are identified.
In total, included in our fiscal year twenty-one budget, we have just under eleven point five million in total proposed projects and grants, including a million dollar set aside for miscellaneous grants that we will apply for throughout the year. Our total amount that is dedicated to capital improvement projects specifically in the twenty-one budget is just under eight point four million.
Great. Thank you for that, Jennifer. Does council have any questions?
Nope, we have one more item, but it's Sarah's. We did capital projects and grants and we have debt. And we've never had to discuss that.
So on the main page, going back to our budget book, on the main page, under the appendix, you can find the debt service schedule. This, the city has very, very, very little debt compared to, in my opinion, compared to most cities. Right now, under the government, or under general fund, we really only have one capital lease left and that's the fire ladder truck. You can see here the debt payments schedule going out and then the last payment is actually in 2025. That is the only debt that we have right now under general fund. Going down under enterprise fund, which are going to be the water sewer garbage. Right now, we have the sewer dump truck capital lease and it's going to be paid off in 2022. We have three bonds under the water facility, for the what that was taken out for the water facility improvements. They range being paid off from 2026 all the way up to all the, I think it's twenty forty-three, I think is when the last one would be paid off. That was where the improvements that were done, 2012 and 13, I think a little bit in 14 as well. Then the sewer revenue bond, that only has two more years to pay off. That is done, that is done in 2022. And that will be freeing up, after that is paid off, that'll be freeing up money to when we go out and actually do the new sewer facility improvements or I guess rebuild of that. And that was part of a, I think, was it last year that we did the whole presentation that had the new sewer? And then when we paid these off to free up money to pay for, if we need to go back out for bonding, that was kind of part of the strategic planning of the bridge payment or the bridge improvements and that whole conversation.
Essentially with the wastewater treatment plant or public that's watching, because there's a lot of conversation about the upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant and when is there a build on a new wastewater treatment facility? At the recommendation of staff, the advisory committee that was working for the staff and ultimately the decision of council, there was a, there was a decision to do bridge improvements to improve the level of treatment at our plant, as well as to replace some of the necessary aging infrastructure and to spend the time to try to get INI under control to determine the size of the plant that would need to be built. But it was specifically, the bridge improvements were done first with the notion of going into the design build for the wastewater treatment plant a couple of years down the road to ensure that we weren't stacking debt on debt for ratepayers. So you can see we're coming to the end of the payoff of that, of that debt. And then that's when we're into the new wastewater treatment facility. I'd also note that that refunded bond included in that bond purchase was the Bali property. So that's when that was purchased by the sewer ratepayers and the financing that was associated with that. Currently under the terms of our agreement with the, with the Bald Dis Golf Association over the last couple of years, the interest that the sewer fund ratepayers are paying on this, this financing related to that property purchase, they are paying that interest in the form of these payments to the city to keep our ratepayers whole. So that was not the way the agreement was originally designed. But when the agreement came up a couple of years ago last year, we redesigned it to ensure that it was the users for the recreation activities were paying the associated interest payments rather than the ratepayers.
And last but not least is a fiduciary fund, which is basically our LID funds. We only have one outstanding debt. Typically what work, how it works here is that we go out and we take the loan, as in the city takes the loan out, we then pay, make the payment on these loans and then we also then extend that payment term, not the term, but the actual payments to the individual homeowners. We collect that money from the homeowners and then pay the debt back. So we're just kind of like the middle, the middle man of the loan. We only have one outstanding LID loan payment. We have two actually outstanding that we're still collecting back payments on one other one, but this is the outstanding loan on that. Other than that, that's the, the only outstanding debt that the city has.
Thank you for that, Sarah. Is, does council have any questions? All right, none. This meeting is now adjourned at 6:57 PM. Thank you, everyone.